I think eventually there's going to be a monitor over there. All I know is my, my, all my legs are not.
Mine, yeah, mine aren't either.
There's supposed to be big TVs on.
You can probably just turn around.
I was just saying, this is so perfect.
This. Oh, I, yeah, I know. That'll be a little bit. Actually, yeah, this does.
We could do that. No.
All right, I show that it's 4:30. We'll go ahead and call the order of the City of Bellevista Planning Commission meeting. I would remind the commissioners, we don't have audio visual tonight, so speak up and speak clearly, please. If you can go ahead and call the roll, please.
Portillo?
Here.
Sedbury?
Here.
Klessen?
Here.
Dool?
Here.
Farner?
Here.
Lloyd?
Here.
Ellis?
Here. All right, we do have a quorum. Next up, we have our regular meeting minutes from February 13th.
I make a motion and be approved and submitted.
A motion for Farner?
Second.
Got a second from Portillo, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, meeting minutes are approved. All right, this is the time of our night where we have our public input session. This will be an opportunity for the public to address the planning commission. We do have sort of a public hearing's offer tonight on the variances and waivers, which we will give the public a chance then. But if there is anybody that would like to address the commission for a non-published item or for one of the large scale, this will be your only opportunity tonight. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public input session. We have nothing under unfinished business, new business. We have waiver 2020-347840, waiver associated with large scale 46350 regarding driveway slope cuts setbacks, pedestrian accommodations, and detention. Ms. Workman?
Thank you. I apologize. So on page seven of your packet on your iPad, you will see the planning commission staff report. And within this staff report, I have taken a look at waiver 47840, large scale 46350, and zoning variance 47158. All of these have to do with the large scale development known as Lisa Reeves Law Office that is located north of the intersection of Oldham and Bellevista Way. This is a 3,200 square foot proposed building on a 9.92 acre C4 lot. Nothing has changed in the staff report since the work session. The applicant is here tonight, though, should you have any questions after my staff report. Planning staff is recommending denial of the large scale zoning variance and waiver application due to the substantial changes that will be required due to the geotech analysis limiting the cut to nine feet, RDOT's driveway grade requirements, the fire marshal driveway grade requirements, and the proposed, the proposed project changing between the third and fourth revision to the point where city staff cannot do it without an additional outside technical review. So contained below are going to be all of the city staff comments, which are outstanding and have been answered. A number of correspondence between RDOT discussing the location and grade of the driveway. Here we have the elevations of the building, and then the plan set below, which still contain the original planning staff comments from the last meeting. And that is all planning has prepared for this staff report. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Is the application for this large scale development complete?
It is not. So there are a number of comments that have to do with 107-225, which is our section that essentially is all of the things that applicant has to show us when they submit to us, things like locations of fire hydrants, landscaping. We're still missing a number of those items from the first through the third revision.
And a denial tonight does not necessarily mean that they can come back in future when everything is in order?
For everything except for the zoning variance. The zoning variance cannot be resubmitted.
Gotcha.
I have a question. Are you talking about what?
Any other questions for staff? All right, we do have the applicant present, if you'd like to go ahead and come up to the podium.
Jason English with experience with variance. We missed the work session, I had a little bit of email trouble, and I didn't get the email a few years of work session.
We have since gotten a geotechnical report, and we just received that last week. We're looking at realigning the drive to the south instead of coming down to Bellevista Way, realigning it so it comes on to Dr. Coombs' building office in the south. I think it'll be a better design.
I guess I have a question for staff, and that would be if the zoning request is denied, if we came back with a different request, not the exact request, do we have to wait to one year to come back with that?
They do not.
No. So if we came back, so right now it asks for 15, we came back for 14, a different number? Can we come back and do that? So I have no problem with that. We, I apologize for this project, we've got additional sites. Convincing the owner that they need to do a geotechnical study was a bit, took a little bit of arm tugging to try to get that done. We finally had that geotechnical study. We convinced them that the driveway out on Bellevista Way is not in the best interest, that we should come to Dr. Coombs. The question right now is if they're trying to coordinate with that property owner to make that happen. So once we get that ironed out, we'll be bringing the plan set back to staff for another review and hopefully we'll have it completed by the time of submission. Any questions, you may ask?
So, you may have any questions for the applicant at this point?
So are you tabling this, or are you suggesting not approving this now? Well?
I think we got a better question for the city attorney. I think, I think we're to the point where the commission can take, has to take action tonight. I think we've tabled this long enough.
Well, that's, the tabling is up to the commission to do.
Right.
The time issues have been waived by the applicant. But the commission has absolutely every right to go ahead and consider this and either vote it up or vote it down as it seems appropriate.
I think that the applicant have the option to withdraw everything he's applied for?
He can.
And then figure that out.
He could.
Is there a stipulation, like before deliberation or anything?
You're gonna have to speak up, Taylor, I'm sorry. What did we say?
I was asking for clarification if it was, if the withdrawal had to be before deliberation or anything?
No, just before a final decision.
I'm sorry.
Before a final decision.
Okay. Before we can, before we take the final decision, he can choose to withdraw it.
I think that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
And maybe that's, thank you, David. Maybe that's the option we will take is just to withdraw and then reapply. I think that would be the better.
You tell us.
I, I think that's the better solution.
So you want to withdraw both of these?
Three.
Thirty of them?
All three of them.
Waiver variance and large scale. All right, so we have items A, B, and C have been requested to be withdrawn by the applicant. Do we need to take action on that or is it just gone?
It's gone.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, we will see you at a later date.
Thank you.
To clarify for many office in the, in the audience, basically what has happened is the Lisa Law Office has been withdrawn from city consideration. We will see it again at some point in the future, possibly, not sure when.
Can you put the mic on, please, so we can all hear what's being said? Or is it not?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, tonight, we don't have any audio visual in the room, this is all we've got.
Oh, do I?
That's not even working to be quite.
No, that's not working.
No. All right, we will speak, I will speak as loud as I can.
Same as I do, yes, if you speak loud, then we all can hear.
Yes, I'll try to, I'll try to repeat the questions and the comments for everybody.
Thank you.
You betcha. All right, next up, we have waiver 2020-347896, a waiver request to waive pedestrian accommodations, ponding requirements, curb and gutter for large scale 47063. Ms. Robertson?
Okay, staff doesn't have much to add from the work session. However, staff will note that the waiver letter has been addressed or edited to address a fourth item, which is the channel slope. So they're actually seeking a waiver on the pedestrian accommodations along 279, the channel slope and drainage pond slope requirements, as well as curb and gutter requirements. So there's four items they're asking to be waived within that waiver letter. Other than that, staff is recommending approvals so long as they meet several requirements, those being that the planning commission approved the waiver request, and that they meet all private requirements, which will include an easement release. They are wanting to put concrete in that tire 15 foot or 7.5 on each side easement, because they will need private release, provide proof of recording of the access agreement for the existing access. They will need to bring that access into compliance with code, that meaning a 30-foot radius, 24 feet wide at least. And similar items, it will be a term, right, right turn only. They'll be placing a sign and striping on there to designate that as a right turn only, since it's going on 279. They will need to achieve RDOT approval, and then of course, final approvals with utilities before getting a building permit or GEC with us. That's the only update I have on this, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Do I understand there are still a number of things that have to be done to make this application complete?
No. So staff is recommending approval for things that need done after LSD. So that's pretty typical, they have to get an easement release before the building permit. These are all just standard after LSD items. The, this application's complete when now that the waiver letter's been addressed.
Do waivers of public improvements, do those deserve approval?
No.
No. All right, any other questions for staff? The applicant present, would you like to add anything to the staff report?
I do not.
All right, do we have any questions for the applicant? I think, I mean, just in general, we, you know, I understand the law's still in its self standards, you know, as a fixed value, and I've heard the argument before, there's sidewalks nowhere. But I also think at some point, we've got to start putting sidewalks in the City of Bellevista, because there just aren't any. So I think what we, what we'll do is take a motion on each individual waiver tonight, and then we'll proceed to the large scale. So with that, looking at the waiver letter, the first up is a waiver on the pedestrian accommodations along 279, is that correct, Taylor?
Yes, it's the first section of it.
All right, so we have Article 4, Section 107-250 for pedestrian accommodations. We have a waiver request on that.
Make a motion to approve the pedestrian accommodations waiver.
We got a motion from Sedbury?
Second.
Got a second from Dool, you call the roll, please.
Portillo?
Yes.
Farner?
No.
Lloyd?
No.
Dool?
No.
Sedbury?
No.
Klessen?
No.
Ellis?
No. All right, next up, we have Article 4, Section 107-250, improvements in standards for streets, curbs, and gutters, and where this is a request tonight install curb and gutter for all the streets unless otherwise specified.
Motion to approve improvements, streets, curbs, and gutters waiver.
Got a motion from Sedbury?
Second.
Got a second from Farner?
Klessen?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, that was from Klessen, let's call first.
I'm sorry, what?
Recall the roll.
Uh, Farner?
What, let, let, something's happened.
Yeah, what's going on?
I thought there was a discussion time before a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead. I apologize. I thought we already discussed all the waivers, so I'm just going down to each one.
No. This is kind of an extension of existing project that has no curbs and gutters, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
And we determined that the water flow is not going to be adversely affected if we approved the waiver for curbs and barriers?
Our engineer found these waiver requests sufficient. He, he found these waiver requests minimal, our engineer had no concern with them.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. We do have a motion by Sedbury and a second by Farner. We can start over with the roll call, please.
Farner?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Sedbury?
No.
Dool? Portillo?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Ellis?
No. All right, next up, we have a, we have a waiver request from Drainage Manual, Chapter 5, Section 6.4, the geometry of storage facilities and pump box slopes must be a minimum of 1% to ensure drainage. Any conversation or discussion? Questions? All right, seeing none, we'll entertain motions.
I make a motion to approve the waiver.
We got a motion to approve from Farner?
Second.
Second from Sedbury?
Dool? No. Sedbury?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Ellis?
No. All right, last up, we have a waiver request from Drainage Manual, Chapter 3, Section 3.11.3, design slopes on a grass line channel. Any discussion or conversation?
And the engineer found that okay also?
Okay. Any other questions? Take a motion?
Motion approves waiver design slopes.
We got a motion from Sedbury?
Second.
Second from Farner, call the roll, please.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, after that, we do have a large scale, the large scale itself. Any further discussions, questions, or comments? Ms. May?
We don't have to have a public hearing for the waiver request?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
We have a large scale. Large, no, the large scale, all the variances and re-zones.
Thank you.
If not, we'll entertain a motion with staff recommendations and comments.
I make a motion we approve with staff recommendations and requirement.
Got a motion from Farner?
Second.
Second from Dool, if you call the roll, please.
Farner?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Lloyd?
No.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
And Ellis?
Yes. Your large scale's approved. You'll get with staff, they can help you out with the next steps, thank you. All right. Nope, I'm flat blind. That's our end of case of the convention. All right, but next up, we have our zoning variance. A zoning variance request for the maximum height in an I-1 zone in the landscape perimeter for large scale 45s, 47527, I think, which is, this is the concrete plant, is that correct, Taylor?
Yeah, this is the concrete plant redevelopment request at 350 Canadian Drive.
Will you give us the page number, Taylor?
Yeah, I'm scrolling through this large document. Page 74 is where we're headed. If you're scrolling, it should come up on the left side.
It comes up on the left side at the top, if, when you're scrolling.
Yep, for me, it's the right side.
I will note that if...
We all at 74 or 75?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So there is a zoning variance request attached with this large scale, so it will require a public hearing tonight, however, staff is recommending tabling that after the public hearing. There has been an update to this project since the work session's now, that being that we've discovered that a septic system that's still being used is within an area of... It's almost ready to recommend approval, however, upon discovery, but the septic, we're still trying to hunt down exactly where it's at. I believe the applicant was there today trying to identify where it is. Septic's permanent on file, so we've really been looking. But we don't want to recommend approval until we verify where that septic is, because it is still being used, so there's not sewer in there, and of course, adequate utilities is a very important part of the large scale requirement. So other than that, I will note also the floodplain are certified. Floodplain manager did add a comment that's on there on page one. That'll be a requirement that they need to meet for the floodplain permit way down the road if you guys do approve this. However, this is the first time that they're coming here, so it's a staff recommending tabling and the discovery of the septic system being on Friday, so good time to this report. The applicant's here to answer more questions, and I believe she just got back from a field visit there, so happy to take any questions before she comes up.
Yeah, real quick question for you, sir. Are you recommending us table the variance and the large scale, or just the large scale?
I would recommend both, so they can be considered together, however you guys obviously want to do it. I'm recommending tabling both.
Okay. Because the variance did deal with the height of the structure, which...
Yeah, you can consider, they're separate.
Yeah.
Plus, I always recommend you wouldn't have your public hearing because the notice went out for today.
Absolutely, and that's, that's the other thing, is a public hearing to hear about that variance request. And I, I don't think there's anything precluding us from taking action on that that would violate if us figuring out the situation later on, would it?
No, you'd be fine.
Do you want me to give information about the zoning variance?
Yeah, I would like for you to go ahead and give that, since we're going to hold a public hearing on that.
Okay, perfect. The applicant is seeking a zoning variance on the following item, which would be the height, which we've already talked about, the I-1 limits all structures within the zone to be maxed out at 45 feet tall. And I believe the hopper is about 54, 55 feet. And they are also requesting a variance on the green space requirements. I-1 is required to have a 15% green space. It is sitting around 5% right now currently as is, but they are trying to up that to 12%. However, they're still not able to reach the 15% requirement due to the hardships they've mentioned in their letter. You guys. And then they are also requiring, requesting a variance on the perimeter landscape requirements on the sides. They would like to keep using the block wall that's already there. And of course, for the hardship reasons they mentioned in their letter. And I defer to them for any more explanation on their hardship reasoning. But those are the three things that this public hearing is about. It's going to be the height for the 54-foot tall hopper, and the landscape perimeter requirements, they want to put a block wall instead, and the third being a green space. It's currently 5%, and the applicant stated they can only get it up to 12%. 3% short of that 15% requirement.
Do we have to take each variance request one by one, sir?
Yes.
Fair enough, public hearing for each one?
Well, were these not all on one application?
Yes, they were.
We can do one public hearing, but we got to vote on each one independently.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for staff on the zoning variance? Oh, we got three going.
Oh, sorry.
Dool first, I heard you first.
Okay, hopefully mine's quick. Okay, I want to make sure I understand their hardship letter. The, the variance for the hopper height, it's not, so they currently have the same height, they're replacing it with the exact same height, is that correct?
I believe that's my understanding, yes.
But we have a pre-existing requirement that be only 45 feet?
Yes, and they're completely replacing it, so it needs brought up code.
Okay.
Right now, it's existing as a legal requirement for me.
Right.
But since they're replacing redevelopment, it's got to be brought up at 45 feet.
Understood, thank you.
And it's my understanding that the reason for the increase is that dust collector on top, is that, is that right?
I thought it was the same, but, uh, she's here for questions like that. I thought it was the same height, but it is going to be an improvement to collect dust better and keep those nuisances on site. That's why they're wanting to replace it.
Any other questions for staff? No, she has one.
No, I have, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If they're talking about this landscaping part of it, if there's a problem with the septic, is that going to affect that? Or, or if they can't do septic, then they would go, have to go hardline?
There is no sewer in that area, so they're going to have to say septic. That's what they are figuring out right now, now that they've discovered where it's at, about. Again, applicant's here to more, I defer to her on more, because she just did a field visit out there. But the green space requirements shouldn't be affected. In fact, it...
If they have to put a larger septic or a new septic, is that going to affect that landscaping?
I don't believe so.
That'd be a good question for the applicant.
Yeah.
I'm full of them today.
That's fine, we're going to get the applicant up here also. Question for staff on their report? Is the applicant present?
Yes, she is.
If you would go ahead and come on up to the microphone for us and speak, speak very loudly. We are limited, and I know that there are people in the, in the audience wanting to listen to you.
I've been trying to listen to your questions, and the older I get, the more you add a little background noise, and it just disappears.
And then the guy's...
It's like that kind, right? Oh, goodness, okay, so I've been out, Taylor called me Friday afternoon, and I've kind of been trying to do a little research on what was what and what is, and when it came in and whatnot. This thing's been operating, Commissioner Dool, for about 30 years in that location. So what he's trying to do is improve the situation. It's, it's a big dusty, it was pretty muddy today, I had to change out of my boots because I didn't want to spoil it in your carpet, it's very fancy in there. But what we did, we went out and measured the top of the box for the sewer tank. And it's, it's located, I don't, are you guys looking at the site plan? It's located about where that number two is in the accessible stall area, if that makes sense. The tank is eight by six, five feet deep. And the lateral lines now extend out to the west, the chairman's going right direction. And I met with the owner today, it's first conversation or first couple of conversations we had about this coming up. And what he's wanting to do, and I don't know, and I apologize for this not being in the correct... I can't even talk anymore today. I think I've got the concrete dust in my throat, quite honestly. But we were, what he was wanting to do and to see if you were agreeable to salivate it as is now, and just not pay over, because I looked at the ordinance and obvious, it's obvious we shouldn't pay solid over it. Owner told me he had recently had maize plumbing out, and they had done a perk test, so it's functioning. It functions as it is, all they had is one stool, one sink, and not high use at all, much less than just the house. But what we were, what he wanted... But what we were, what he wanted me to see is if we could leave, leave it basically as is in that area and not pave that area. It would remain as gravel. Which to me would be the closest we could come, but it's still somewhat of a grandfathering in as is. It's been there so long, so I don't know how that works. I don't know. And then I don't know, because I know if he leaves it gravel, leaves it as is, he could still use it for maneuvering and queuing and that sort of thing. But he would take the walls that we currently have shown and take those bins, move them to the backside of the property, and we would go with option number one for that concrete plant equipment to go, to kind of stay right where it is for much, to rightness into the property. So I'm not quite sure if that would be a variance from solid surfacing or what that might add to our process we need to do to make it fit.
I don't, I don't want to speak for staff, and I'm going to be willing to bet before you can get your large-scale approved, you're going to have to get whatever septic stuff you're dealing with approved by the Department of Health. And get it acted upon.
Well, we were proposing to leave do nothing.
I think it's still...
The do-nothing option.
I think it still has to be permitted. It never was permitted, and it's going to have to be permitted with the Department of Health. They're actually the ones that govern septic systems at the end of the day, correct? Not us.
I don't know.
Our city attorney's sitting there shaking his head that you're going to have to deal with.
Yeah. Again, I don't know that it wasn't permitted. I mean, it's 20, 30 years ago. The Department of Health's been in, they've been doing this for a while, so...
I had a permit on my first septic system on my house I built back in the 90s.
Did you?
Yes, ma'am. Tom class.
Okay, so we're going to have to find it? Is that the issue? Is that...
Yeah, we're going to look at, there are requirements, one of mine, line six, there's not a lot of driveway through traversing Cooper.
So whether that be gravel or concrete, that's where staff feels uncomfortable making a recommendation. Because there's still maybe maneuvering on top of it, which our code does not allow.
Yeah, there's, there was an agreement made back in the 70s between Cooper and the Health Department on septic systems, and what can be done and can't be done, and I...
Well, they've been doing it though. That's the problem. Because it's basically taken away a privilege and a right and a level of enjoyment of that property for 30 years. Not to use those words, but...
And if those aren't permitted?
Yeah, well, he can, I know, and he's upgrading the property too. He's trying to fix the situation, so. And I'm not at all being combative, but it's just that we've kind of, we've gone through this, and we're like, oh, we got to have a variance, we come back. So now I just need to know what we can do to get it to where he can do what he needs to do. And if that's coming from staff, then we need to table...
We're here for the, for the variance. Really, what you're asking are legitimate questions, but they need to be worked out with the staff, not in front of the planning commission meeting.
Right, yeah, I just thought it was a, I thought it would end up as a variance, so I wanted to talk to them about it.
Yeah, but this woman can't take up tonight because it's not been published or anything like that. The only thing we can take up tonight is your proposed height one,
Okay.
the green space one, and the landscape perimeter one.
Did you guys have any questions for me about that? Those pieces? Right now there are solid walls on either side of the property, so there's no landscaping there. He's adding a landscape in the front.
Effectively, this is going to be about the same height as the, as the original one, is what I'm really looking at.
Yes, and there is...
We're not like sticking something up way taller than what was there before. It's more or less...
No, it's pretty much the same. It's just got the dust collector on the top, which helps everybody.
Right. Okay. All right, any other questions for the applicant? All right, we'll go ahead and conduct a public hearing, and then we'll go from there. All right, at this time, we're going to go ahead and conduct a public hearing. What we'll be talking about during this public hearing will be the proposed height variance that they're asking for, the proposed green space variance reduction from 15% to 12%, and then the perimeter landscaping. So at this time, if there's anybody in the public that would like to address the planning commission, if you come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes to speak to the planning commission.
Is this only on the hopper that you're saying?
This is on the hopper, yes, ma'am. Come on up to the microphone, give us your name and address. You have five minutes, yes, ma'am.
My name is Denise Roche, R-O-C-H-E double T-E. I live on Dawson. And my question, when you talk about heights on an I, is it I-1? Does that, will that now be for all I-1 zone areas or only this one in particular?
It would be just for this particular property only. It would not apply to anything else within the city.
Even though it has the same zoning of I-1?
That's correct. Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission concerning these variance requests? All right, seeing that, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the planning commission. Ultimately, I think it's up to us if we want to take action on these three variances tonight or not. I kind of feel like we should. The public's here, and we can take them one by one. So, and I think it would give the applicants guidance on how to move forward with the rest of the large scale. That's up to you all, that's just my opinion.
Okay, for that.
Yes, I'm okay.
Okay. I'm going to do my best to get these right then. Might need your help, Taylor, so bear with me.
Should have them under request on my main page of the staff report.
All right. Well, it just listed. Let me sit here.
What page?
I think I've got this. All right, we'll take up the first one. It'll be on the, on the request to exceed the height from 45 feet to 54 feet. Is that correct?
Sorry.
58 feet, thank you. So we have a variance request to increase the height limit from 45 feet to 58 feet. Any, any discussion?
I make a motion we approve.
We got a motion from Farnor?
Second.
Got a second from Klessen, if you call the roll please.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Farnor?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, next up, we have a variance request to reduce the allowable green space from 15% to 12%. Any, any discussion? See, now I'll take a motion.
I make a motion we approve the waiver.
A motion from Farnor?
Second.
Second from Sedbury, if you call the roll please.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Farnor?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, finally, we have a variance request on the perimeter landscaping. Any, any question or comments? See, now we're in motion.
Motion to approve the variance for the perimeter landscaping.
Right. Got a motion from Sedbury?
Second.
Yeah, a second from Lloyd, call the roll please.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Farnor?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, all three of your variances are approved. As far as the large scale goes, if you could come back up to the podium, we'll need you to request to be table and waive your 60-day timeframe or we will be required to take action on your, on the large scale tonight. It's 60 days in Bellevista.
It's nine for the large scale.
Oh, it's nine is for large scale?
All right, Taylor told me nine, so I didn't want to ask for 60.
We've had a lot of tabling lately. I'm glad we got staff over here to keep me straight.
And just to be clear, it's not a requirement that they waive the time, but it may give you more of an incentive to go ahead and agree to table it if they waive the time.
Yes.
Because you'll have meetings between now and 90 days.
Yes, we're pretty close, so it's...
It feels like it, because we only had a delay with the waiver, so. I am requesting that you allow us to table this item and also stating that we waive the 90-day requirement for action to be taken. I get that close?
We have a request for the applicant to table this. Can we get a motion, please?
I make a motion to table the item.
We got a motion from Klessen?
Second.
Second from Portillo, call the roll please.
Farnor?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. We'll see you next month. Good luck with...
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, next up, we have rezoning 2022 47387, request for rezoning the subject property at 2271 Bellevista Way from R-1 to I-1. Ms. Robertson?
I have no updates on this one. This is currently known as Golf Central. It is, the applicant is here just like he has been, however, the request is a little different, so C-1. Neighborhood commercial, he's requesting I-1 due to the current land use and historical land use of this property, being hazardous material storage, maintenance, equipment storage, all of those items that you don't typically find, and neighborhood commercial items. So he is also using another maintenance facility. It's also currently zoned as I-1. He stated that in his letter. And the staff is recommending that a more intense use go here other than R-1 single family. It is in the most intense node on our comprehensive plan, however, a comprehensive plan does not address future land use for industrial uses. However, it is in the most intense node that we have on a future land use plan, so something more intense than R-1 needs to go here. The applicant is aware that you may modify the request as is if you choose to do so for city council. And I believe he's here to answer any questions that you guys have.
Thank you, Taylor. Any questions for staff? Mr. Farnor?
I think this may be more for Jason, the attorney, than staff. I have some concerns, and it was expressed in our work session, that if we rezoned this and the POA later decided to sell the property, then we don't know what could go in there. Now, I understand the POA could virtually not sell it, but it's my understanding they can lease the property. So my question would be, is there any way we can approve this zoning change and put some restriction on it so they could not lease it without coming back to us? No. You, you can't do that. I mean, if it goes from C-1 to I-1, then anything that would be allowed in I-1 could happen there. Okay. We don't do, there's no conditional rezoning. I mean, there, there are conditional use permits, but this is not what's been requested, and I don't even know that this would be a conditional use in that zone. So that's the process, what you're talking about, but that just doesn't apply. If there are any other zoning that would be compatible with what they're doing, that would be less restrictive, be more restrictive than, than the I-1? I, I'm glad you asked me that question because I, I don't know the answer to your question in terms of the zoning. But it's very important to keep in mind. The city does not zone to put it back the way you're currently using it. That's not the purpose of planning. It's right inherent in the word planning. It's what the city wants to see potentially in the future or what it desires to see continued in the future. So the, and, and I mean no disrespect, but when people say, well, I want it zoned the way I'm using it, well, they're allowed to continue to use it in that way as a pre-existing non-conforming use. And the city or the future or prior planning commissions have decided we want to see this be something else in the future or potentially be something else in the future. Now, that opinion can change, and you might think, hey, the way it's being used now is fine. And that's fine. Am I hearing you say that if we decline this change, then he could, they could continue to use the property as is? Right, but they couldn't expand it or remodel it or re-provise it. That's where it was going. That's, that's obviously where their concern would be. Okay. From what I've heard on other projects. Ma'am, that's out of order. You can't, ma'am, it's out of order. I'm sorry, you can't speak right now, okay?
We will, we will conduct, ma'am, ma'am, we'll conduct a public hearing in a minute. They give you an opportunity to speak. But this is just, this is just like a court of law. We give everybody an opportunity to speak, but you got to wait your turn, okay?
I think I've said everything I intended to say, unless there's more questions. You answered my question, thank you.
But to summarize, we could recommend the city council anything from I-1 to R-1 because all of those are lesser zone than what's been asked for. Right? And C-1 will be a lesser zone than I-1.
You can recommend whatever zone in the book you want to recommend.
Perfect. We can recommend that the city council approve C-1 or R-3 or...
Or we recommend it. Or you could just deny it. Yeah, that's right. And then appeal it to the coun, they could appeal it to the council, and then they could issue a judgment.
Yeah.
So then it stays.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Dool has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, which came first, the use or the R-1 zoning?
So the R-1 zoning didn't exist until roughly 2009. We didn't, we weren't a city, we didn't have, it was only code established until 2009. We began studying 2007, adopted the zoning code 2009. The applicant is saying that this golf central facility has pre-existed since city establishment.
And then how does this jive with the future use?
So I kind of touched on that a little bit. You can see on the staff report that it is in a, our most intense node that we have on our comprehensive plan. It's labeled as a community destination. It is the most intense node. It offers, however, it doesn't address future land use for industrial anywhere in the city. It only talks about mixed-use residential, commercial, retail items like that. It fails to mention any future industrial anywhere. However, it is in the note, so something, that's why staff is recommending approval of something more intense than R-1 because this is our most intense note that we have.
And the I-1 was necessary because of what they were storing on site?
Well, it's what the applicant requested.
That's what they're saying?
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? The applicant is present. Would you like to come up to the podium and give us your name, please, and who you represent?
Good afternoon, my name is Tom Judson. I represent the Bellevista Property and Orders Association. Thank you for listening to our hearing on this one. This is different. We've done a lot of rezoning applications. This is the first I-1, which matches the current and historical usage, which creates the city by a long shot. This is consistent with another golf course maintenance facility, which is located for the country club up by the water, wastewater treatment plant. That is also I-1, which is why we recommend or are requesting I-1 for here. Regarding future selling, it's near impossible for the POA to sell land. And also, there is a deed restriction on that land, which requires it to be for recreational purposes only. So in the extreme situation of the POA actually being able to sell land, that deed restriction would follow the land and would require it to be for recreational purposes only. And the golf course is a, the golf course maintenance facility is a function of recreational usage. So we wouldn't be able to, you know, we wouldn't be able to lease it or sell it and have them do something other than what it's currently being used for. Any questions?
My question is still the same, and maybe it would come from you, Jason. In a situation where the property were leased down the road, would the deed restriction follow? Keep, we're conflating two things. Private restrictions and the public restrictions. It is not uncommon for cities to consider, on the front end, a bill of assurance that would limit particular uses on property before a city were to rezonate. Okay? So that, that's already kind of in place because you've got covenants in place, which say, and I haven't seen these on this particular property, but it says it's limited to recreation. So I, I guess that begs the question, how are you able to do what you're doing now that's an industrial use on property that's limited to recreational use by covenant?
Because it's a function of recreation. In order to have a golf course, you have to have a golf course maintenance facility, and so that's by extension is recreational.
So I mean, you can consider that limitation in considering whether or not it should be rezoned. But the issue, whether it's owned or leased, is not, is not really of merit here. It's use. If they lease it, that's up to their rules whether they can lease it or not. Someone's going to come in and operate on it. It has to comply with our zoning code in whatever manner. But what, what, I want to answer your question. I don't want to leave you hanging. The question I have is if that property, and I don't know that you would ever do it, but let's suppose that the POA decided that one's going to be golf down there, and they're going to lease that property.
they're gonna lease that property. If it's zoned I1, there are a long list of things that could be there.
Right.
That wouldn't be, it would not be very nice in that area. Let's put it that way.
Okay. Well, then that's, then, then you need to consider that and determine whether it needs to be rezoned to I1.
That's exactly right. You've answered that before.
But, but, but what, what I'm saying to you is that the fact that the property has a restriction on it akin to a bill of assurance, but in this case it's a covenant, which works about the same way, that you know that some of those really bad things couldn't happen. So it might make you more likely to approve the I1 zone in light of that. But that's, that's the best I can tell you, okay?
You answered my question.
Okay.
Staff just has a clarification note, too. The use restriction is provided on page 101 of the packet, and it discusses, I just wanted, I think recreation was mentioned earlier. The use restriction states that it shall be exclusively used for the maintenance of golf courses, turf or parks, and no other use. I just wanted to clarify that.
So obviously, your concern is that someone would try to construct a rendering plan on it.
Yeah.
Okay? Well, you can take into consideration the fact that there are covenant restrictions on the property, which would prevent that from happening.
Any other questions for the applicant? All righty. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I had to get my cheat sheet here with all the zones.
Well, you're beating me to it, 'cause I'm looking for the same thing.
'Cause I stole it. So can you speak to, 'cause I'm looking at the chart, and I understand you don't have it in front of you. So maintenance facility and recreation can both be in I1, but there's other commercial zones that would also allow that use as well. Can you speak to why you chose, why I1 is more appropriate, why you asked for that, and any of the other ones?
So two reasons. I let, I used the guidance of the precedent being set for the other facility. It made sense. And second of all, I contacted our golf course superintendent that runs the location and said, "What do we do? Tell me exactly what we do there." And then what I did was I took the zoning language from the city, and I started matching up. I looked at C1, C2, and I1, I2. I went through every single one, and to the best of my ability, I1 made the most amount of sets and had the most amount of connections based on how we use the current property. So that's how we did it, but also I followed the precedent.
Because that's what the other facility uses.
That's the other facility is I1, and we basically do the exact same thing at that location also, so.
Okay, thank you.
Another large portion during the discussion, early discussion, was the storage of hazardous materials. That was also a big point.
Thank you.
But the storage of hazardous materials is secondary.
Is what?
Secondary to the primary function of this facility.
It supports, it supports all the other maintenance facilities.
So the primary use of the facility isn't storage of hazardous materials. The hazardous materials are part of their normal operations.
We don't really establish primary versus secondary.
Well, I know, just for, I'm working.
Okay.
We have storage of fertilizer for fuel, those things, but mostly what we do there is, we call it golf central because we bring a lot of our equipment from the other golf courses to this location to do repairs to it and so forth. But we also do support, we do store fertilizer there. As a way of being efficient, we'll bring in large quantities there and then dispersing to the other locations. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. We go ahead, we will go ahead and open this to the public. If there's anybody in the public that would like to address the commission concerning this rezone request from an R1 to an I1, if you'd come to the podium and give us your name and address, and then you will have five minutes to speak.
Sorry.
If you, if you come to the podium, please.
Very well.
Yes, ma'am? Give us your name and address again.
Did you refer to, I was, no, I was just referring to Tom's email that he had sent us, where he stated that it would be used, although he was asking for the zoning of one I1, he was going to use it specifically for the maintenance of the equipment used on the golf course, and that it would not be changed unless the grantor authorized it. And I, my question was, who is the grantor that you referred to in your letter?
Well, we can't have a go-by for it. You have to address the planning commission, and then we'll give the applicant a chance to rebut. Yes, ma'am?
So that was my question.
Okay.
Who is the grantor that can change the usage, the intended usage under that I1 classification into something other than what it is currently being used for?
We'll, we'll have the applicant come back up in a minute and address more comments.
Thank you. That was my question. And is there any, maybe the applicant can tell me, because it's more familiar with the area, is there any plan to modify the buildings, or is it just gonna continue pretty much as it is? My, my not adjacent to it, that's why I was questioning. Someone had said they were gonna continue to expand the buildings.
I don't know. That's really not important what we look at tonight.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address the commission concerning this request from R1 to I1? Yes, sir? If you would give us your name and address, please?
Good afternoon. My name is David Vales. I live at 37 Dalton Drive, right on top of this thing. I apologize first. I'm rehashing something that y'all've already discussed. I couldn't hear anything. My concern is, this facility, if I understand correctly, was established before zoning was there for that? Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Oh, okay. And I understand the desire to get it correct for the use that it is being, actually being used for. As a guy that lives on top of this thing, my concern is if this is a residential area that is zoned residential area, and we have an industrial complex there now, if we rezoned it industrial one, I'm curious as to what's really gonna be there 10 years down the road. So my concern is the fact that we seem to have encroached a little bit on the original design function of that area, and I'm just wondering, what are we gonna encroach on next? And my concern is just for my and my family's quality of life at the top of the hill. That's why I was letting you know that I am concerned about that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address the commission concerning this request? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll give you a chance to come back up to the podium if you'd like to address any of the comments that were made.
We're not planning on making any changes to this facility anytime in the near future. Why it was placed as R1, unfortunately, we see several examples within our community where things were zoned oddly. Grantor, the grantor on the document she was referencing was Cooper.
I do have one quick question for you. In looking through our complete schedule of uses, the C2 zone would allow for short-term vehicle storage, vehicle maintenance, and things like that as well. If that's something you all would consider concerning where this is located at on 71 versus not being next to the wastewater treatment plant? Because like our attorney did say when we went through training before, technically, we're using zoning to kind of make it long-term for what we would like the city to be, and not so much what the city is or was. And, and I'm kind of, I'm kind of with some of the neighbors there. I don't ever, you know, let's say the POA ceases to exist, for whatever reason, and the golf course is closed down. I don't see that being a location where we want another concrete plant to be able to go there by ride or something like that. But by rezoning this, we're effectively saying anything that's allowed in the I1 zone, if everything else goes away, can be done. And we know, I know like a C2 zone will get you really close, might not quite cover the chemical storage, but it sure would take care of the vehicle, short-term vehicle storage, and a lot of the things that you are doing there, but still be more a key component of the top plan. That's just my question.
I'm open-minded. To tell you the truth, you know, a couple months ago, I had very limited knowledge about zoning and so forth. We're just trying to plan for the future in case we were to someday need to add on to that facility or something of that nature. And clearly, R1 is not even close to being the right zoning. We just want to be in a situation where the usage makes sense, and if we were to request something down the road, and we're not contemplating anything, you know, we're going through, we're trying to, you know, I've identified, unfortunately, I identified 28 of the POA's parcels that are zoned incorrectly. So this is not, you know, and clearly, we don't have plans for all 28. That would be financially crazy. We're just trying to get it right and get it for the future. So to answer your question, we're open-minded, but, but to answer the question from earlier, in looking at the usage, it does appear that I1 makes more sense, but I never wanted to say no. We want to work with the community. We want to work with the city. I understand the concerns. If I was letting me by, close by, I'd probably be concerned also, which is why the reason I wanted to come up here, and I wanted to assure people that we're not gonna do anything crazy. We're not gonna lease, we're not gonna do, you know, put in a concrete plant or anything like, I'm not trying to ground the concrete people.
Cell phone towers are permitted by ride, isn't it? That's another one that kind of would be concerning, that could be done.
Yeah, we're not doing, we're trying to get out of the cell tower business.
Understand. But we have them in several places in these very similar situations right now.
Right. We were actually recently approached by another company, and we told them that we weren't interested because we felt it was gonna be too close to homes and so forth. So we nixed it at the onset, and we didn't have to go through the city or anything because we felt it was inappropriate, the location they were looking for.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. Commissioners?
Dana, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So, you mentioned C2. Would C2 allow them to store the fertilizer and other chemicals like that, or is a conditional use permit available to allow them to do it?
Pre-existing non-conforming use, so they could continue to do what they're doing now at the scale they're doing it.
With the C2 decision?
With any other rezoning, as long as their use has been uninterrupted.
Thank you.
And I, and that's, it's very poetic that we did have our training in our work session because this is really what I, what the folks came to talk to us about, what our real job is. It's really not about bringing things into conformity, but planning for the future of all of this. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. I understand that it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. However, say we were to pick C2, and they needed to renovate the building or add something on, at that point, would that shut down a grandfather use?
If the, if the enhancement was to facilitate the C2 permitted uses, it would be okay.
Okay.
Right? Wouldn't you interpret it that way?
We have a maximum square footage increase. The use has to be within compliance if it's exceeding more than 25% increase.
What, 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 I believe what Ms. Lloyd is saying is if they've got chemicals stored over here on this side of the lot, but over here they want to do something with the parking facility or something that they could do in a C2. I don't, they were not gonna have to move this stuff if it's C2, they're not gonna then have to move this stuff, which is continued in place, in order to make a C2-type improvement. Is that, okay?
And just remember, we don't rezonate, we just make a recommendation to the city council. And we can recommend really anything.
And it's up to council.
From denial to I2, quite honestly.
So I, I'm a, I'm sure Dana's opinion, like, you look at our list of uses, it says ag sales and services is a permitted use. Wouldn't you say that fertilizer is part of ag sales and service? So why would it be permitted in ag sales and service and not for a golf maintenance facility if they're both in C2?
I think if it is, convenience stores are allowed in C2 zone with fuel storage. I mean, I, like I said, I'm not trying to cram a round peg into a square hole here, but...
Well, I can tell you that as you sit as the board of adjustment, you all will make the ultimate decision about what type of use fits in which zone. So if it came a question about whether that use was permitted or not, you make the final determination of whether it is or isn't.
Yeah, I think what we're being asked to today, what do we see as the highest and best use for that property long-term for the city of Villavista and citizens of Villavista?
Well, if, if the commission wanted to change this to C2, would we then just recommend to the city council that they approve changing it to C2? Or does the, does he have to come back and start over?
No, he does not have to come back and start over. We have held a public hearing. Excuse me?
You can just modify it right now. You don't have to...
Yeah, that's what I was telling you. And we can recommend, like I said, we can recommend anything the city council we want to. We conduct it in public.
And they'll do what they want to anyway.
Yes, sir.
Right. You ready for a motion?
If we're done with discussion, you may.
Well, I would make a motion that we recommend to the city council that they rezonate this property C2.
I've got a motion from Farnor.
Second.
Got a second from Sedbury. If you would call a roll, please.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Farnor?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. City council, it gets you really, I think it gets you there, to be honest with you. That's one person.
Can I say something?
We got, you're our, you're our council.
We're done with this item.
We're done with this item. You can always take it up to the city council, they're the ones that actually take action.
We're fine, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we have a request to rezonate subject property 1 Houston Road, noted at the Metfield Clubhouse, from P1 conservation to C1 neighborhood commercial. Ms. Robertson?
I promise I'll sit down at some point. You guys won't have to look at me anymore. Okay, so this one is noted at Metfield Clubhouse. It's at 1 Houston Road. It's currently P1 conservation, or for land that can't be developed or developed, or to be restricted to development. It's already been developed, it already has a existing use, as we've already noted, a recreational club, civic, controlled commercial, restaurant commercial, as well as personal improvement commercial. So that is justifying, or that is the applicant's justification of C1. Staff has recommended approval due to the fact that it's sitting with a neighborhood commercial note, and the C1 request meets that intent of our future land use note. It's right smack in the middle of that note, so staff has recommended approval. Nothing new to add to that.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, applicants present, would you like to add anything to the staff report? All right, this is a public hearing, so we will go ahead and conduct that. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission concerning the request of changing the Metfield Clubhouse from a P1 to a C1, if you would come up and state your name and address, and we will give you five minutes to address the planning commission. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and take it back to the commission.
I make a motion that we recommend to the city council changing this from R1 to C1.
P1 to C1.
P1, I'm sorry.
Second.
Got a motion from Farnor, a second from Lloyd. If you call a roll, please.
Dool?
Yep.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Farnor?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, next up, we have rezoning 2022-47385, a request to rezonate Bowling Springs Park, where the Gearhead Brew Pub is at, or whatever it's called, from P1 conservation to C1 neighborhood commercial. Ms. Wirtman?
Thank you. This is where the gear cart meets. This is the northernmost parcel of Blowing Springs Park. It also includes two transient lodging, short-term rental cabins, a large off-street parking lot that can take, that is, makes up 95% of that lot's coverage. There have been no changes to this staff report. I have to take some questions.
Any questions for, for staff? The applicant present, anything you'd like to add? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and conduct a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission concerning the request to rezonate the northern part of Blowing Springs Park from P1 to C1? Yes, sir, if you would give us your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Steve Freeman, Two Hill Lane. Sounds to me like you're just rezoning to accommodate what's already being done there. There again, there's no plan for anything, you're not presenting a plan, you're a planning commission. You should be presenting a plan of what's going to be there in the future. So, I don't see it as like the golf course usage. If it's already being used and grandfathered in, why are you changing the zoning unless you're going to do something different in that area? So I'd like to see what's planned for that area as a resident before the planning commission would go on. So that's what I have to offer. Appreciate it, thank you, appreciate that.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sir.
Just a long walk.
I didn't see you behind Mr. Tab.
Matt Porter, Six Hill Lane, same road, so same argument. Would love to see, you know, before we just open it up, we'd love to see some sort of understanding of what's going to be used for. So, that's all.
Thanks, sir. Is there anybody else? Ms. Workman, you would come back up to the podium and explain our comp plan?
Sure.
Plan, please.
So Blowing Springs Park is located within the vicinity of a large-scale commercial activity node, as identified in our comp plan. So that is an area in the comp plan that would like to see a regional draw. So that's a mix of retail, that's a mix of residential, commercial, institutional. And Blowing Springs Park is nearing, meeting that goal. All of the permitted by right uses within the C1 do meet the intent of the commercial activity center node, as outlined by the comp plan.
All right, thank you. To clarify for you, yes, sir, to clarify for you guys, when we talk about planning, we're not talking about construction drawings or specific intended uses. We look at large, kind of more over and reaching, you know, is it residential, is it going to be commercial? We're saying we want it to be a low-density neighborhood commercial there. Then once we rezoned to match up with the comp plan that the city council adopted a couple of years ago, then if the applicant wants to come back and add on to the Gear Garden, or wants to add something else that fits within our C1 zone, then he's allowed to do that. But basically, when we talk about planning, it's about, you know, should it be residential, should it be commercial? Council more or less answered that for us already when they conducted the comp plan, and they adopted that, was that two years ago or three years ago?
Couple of years.
Yeah, a couple of years ago. So they, they kind of did all that planning piece of it a couple of years ago. We're just, what's being asked of us now is, is this request by the applicant consistent with that plan that was prepared and adopted by council?
We've got a copy of that plan right here. Where that box is there, it is directly next to that commercial area node, and that should be Blowing Springs all the way to 71 Business or Bell Vista Way.
Any other comments from commissioners? An applicant motion?
I'll make the motion to recommend rezoning request 2022-47385 to the city council.
We have a motion from Klessen to recommend rezoning the north part of Blowing Springs Park from P1 to C1.
Second.
Got a second from Farner, if you call roll please.
Farner?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, next up, we have rezoning request 2022-47388, a request to rezonate the subject property from 31 Hilltop Drive, known as the Metfield Park, from P1 conservation to C1 commercial district. Ms. Workman?
Again, this is another P1 conservation zone site, where the POA is requesting C1 neighborhood commercial. The P1 is designed to restrict development in areas that are challenged by topography, floodwaters, wetlands, wildlife. However, this site has been developed quite a bit. It actually exceeds the allowable coverage within the P1. That allowable coverage within the P1 is maxed out at 5%. This site here is covered by 14%. So it meets the C1 coverage, however, it does not meet the P1 coverage. It nearly exceeds it times three. The Adoptive Comprehensive Land Use Plan describes a need for a small-scale commercial activity node within this area, and that includes a mix of retail parks, common land, and common land uses, and residential. The site currently has residential on two sides. It also is rented by a public park and a minor arterial with greenway access, creating a multimodal connectivity to meet that land use plan. I've made no other changes to the staff report, have to take any questions?
We have any questions for staff on this report? All right, seeing none of the applicant, anything you'd like to add to the staff report? This is a rezoning request, and it doesn't require a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to address the commission on the request to rezonate the Metfield Park from P1 to C1? You would come up and give us your name and address, please? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I make a motion that we recommend to the council to change, what's your C1?
Second.
Got a motion from Farner, a second from Lloyd, call roll please.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. That will be at city council also. Next up, we have a zoning variance request on off-street parking spaces for an R1 single-family at Ford Airlock Circle. Mr. Dool, you get to talk tonight.
I know. Hopefully, I'll get in here. So, there's not much to add, can you come here, okay?
You're right, you need to speak loudly.
I'll probably abandon this.
It's that's work, you just need to hold it. Too tall.
Okay, is this all right? Staff doesn't have much to add to what we covered in the work session. Like you mentioned, this is a zone variance to reduce the required number of parking spaces for a single-family dashed home behind the front building setback from two to one. The applicants can speak more on the hardships, but it's namely the C2 parking being shaped a lot. I'll go ahead and catch up here. So, the property is ledged in shape, which makes the developable area fronting Airlock Circle very narrow and pushes the developable area up close to the right-of-way. So, the subject system makes for a pretty neatly shaped house. And this lot is in keeping with the comprehensive plan as a residential district. So, staff recommends approval of this zone variance so long as the driveway grade does not exceed a 12% slope and that all water runoff created is kept within the drainage systems. Beyond that, though, staff has nothing else to add.
Any questions for staff? If you remind me, this is the one that's kind of a really small footprint, two-story stack, trying to really minimize the impact on the lot?
Yeah.
At the end, the exhibits are included, there should be a house plan there.
Did y'all see this? No, I'm looking at my iPad, but it can't keep up with the, with the staff. It keeps resetting, all right? Oh, okay, yeah. Thank you. All right, is the applicant present? Would you like to add anything to the staff report?
No, sir, if you have any more questions.
Any questions for the applicant? This is a variance request, we will go ahead and conduct a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission concerning this request to reduce the number of off-street parking at Ford Airlock Circle? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, it's back to you. This will be a final decision, what we decide of what it is.
Make a motion to approve the subject to staff.
We got a motion from Sedbury?
Second.
Second from Portillo, she speaks to him. You call roll please.
Dool?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. Your variance is approved. Staff will get with you on the next step, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a zoning variance request on the maximum number of dockside improvements allowed per parcel at 39 Davis Circle. Ms. Robertson?
Okay, staff doesn't have too much to add to this. However, I have actually the public comment, which has been provided in the packet for you guys, towards the very end, and I believe this is page, the public comment's on 144, I believe. And they're seeking, the townhouse at 39 Davis is requesting to build a dock on the limited common property that is owned by the Townhouse Association. Regardless of zone or size, our code only allows one dock per parcel, no matter how big it is, what zoning it is, if it's commercial or conservation, whatever it be, it can only have one dock. So this parcel, which is the limited common property, already has eight to nine docks on it. So now that 39 Davis is moving in, they want their own dock, so they are seeking a variance on that requirement, so they can have a dock like other townhouses do on this limited common property. Other than that, the only thing additional is the public comment, like I mentioned, on page 144. Have to take any questions?
Any questions for staff? All right, is the applicant present?
Yes.
If you would come up to the podium, and if you would give us your name, and you can add to the staff report, you don't have to say anything at all, it's all up to you.
Karen Doyle.
Do you have anything to add to the staff report? Any questions for the applicant? All right, this is, they will have to go ahead and conduct the public hearing. If you'd have a seat real quick, we'll get right back to you. This is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the commission concerning this request for dockside improvements? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, back to you. Yes, ma'am?
Is it correct that the work on this has already been started prior to getting permission?
That would be a question for staff.
Um, staff is unsure that, that'd be a question for the applicant.
Yes, ma'am.
What happened, we were going through getting everything done, our stair guy came out just marked and looked at where he was going to put the stairs because the Townhome Association said yes. And then we found out, no, we got to do more. So then he stopped everything, so all it is is stakes in line.
No concrete's been poured?
No concrete, nope.
No concrete's been poured?
Nope. He did put a platform out there for his guys to stand on, because it is on a hill. So that's the only thing he did, but that is not part of our stairs, and that will be removed. And he hasn't done it yet until we know if it's a go or if it's not a go.
Any other questions or comments?
And this is for how many units? This is just ours. Like, there's four, there's four units in our parcel, and there's one dock that's been there for years and years, and then nobody else in our parcel. And then the next parcel over has one or two, and it just keeps going down the different areas where people has put them in. I guess not all of them are legit, I don't know for sure.
It's kind of one of the unique things of Bell Vista.
I would have thought, just my thing, if you're only going to allow one, you would did like a community one for that group of four. But who knows? So, I'm sorry, it goes specifically with your townhouse? Yes, yeah. And we've talked, we've got approval from both of our neighbors that don't have docks for it. We don't do, we didn't do it just on our own, and we've even offered to let them use it also. But they don't have any desire to put one in, so...
It's kind of one of those things where eight other townhomes have already gotten the right to have a dock there, and...
Over the years, yeah. Yeah.
Do you have any words with them, Mr. City Attorney?
I've probably said enough, I tend to anger people the more I talk. The, the, the criteria for whether to grant a variance don't change. They are what they are. You all are the arbiters of that.
Fair enough.
So, let me, let me get this straight again. So, anybody else in your unit? If that's yours. But we have someone else that would also like their own.
Yes.
Right, next to you.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
I've sold quite a lot of townhouses in this particular development, and I understand why we have the ordinance that says one dock per parcel. This is kind of an unusual situation because you've got a whole bunch of townhouses, and a big parcel that goes all the way around the lakefront edge that belongs to the Townhouse Association, which is one parcel. But it's a very different situation, and I have a lakefront lot, and I can put one dock. Because all of the different town, if we were to... Theoretically, anybody who has a lakefront, it's not exactly lakefront because it's separate from the lake because of the townhouse parcel, should they all have the right to put a dock? Or should the person who just bought be denied because other people got there first?
Right.
So it's a very alien situation.
Yes.
I think the unique parcel layout, it potentially could justify a decision. I mean, if it, if you're looking for something.
I was kind of envisioning it, if I were to extend the parcel line for each unit across the common property to the lake, then it would be. It may be one of those things we need to address in the future in our code to deal with situations like this, because I'm sure we have more variances like this coming. Ms. Robertson is shaking her head. And we have approved variance requests like this before in the past. We have to be careful not to be arbitrary and capricious either. Sorry, I don't want to be an attorney.
Oh, you're, you're, but you say something wrong, I'll tell you.
I think if we look at the four waiver requirements, that a couple, several of these apply to this situation.
Technically, it's got to be all over.
Three, three variances required.
Yeah, three variance requirements, and they're very specific. You know, what is the unique nature of the property, what's the hardship? Will it negatively impact or give her the right?
I think all four of them could apply in this situation to this unique parcel of land.
And then just to clarify, this is a variance, it's on waivers. And there's only three requirements for variances.
Sorry.
Yes.
Is this a common scenario? Do we have others on different lakes in town that are just like this?
We've had others, especially P1 conservation. It's actually on our open discussion topic as well tonight.
I mean, specifically, like the horizontal property regime with the common property, or the...
Yes, this is all, this is all over Bell Vista, on any lake that it can have a motorized boat on it.
Lake Rayburn has a townhouse subdivision, it's the same issue.
It's one of, it's one of those times when I, like when I will say to staff, if we keep seeing the variance request, it probably could need to look in our code. Anyway, with that, I do need a motion for a further discussion.
How many motions approved?
A motion from Sedbury?
Second.
Got a second from Farner, if you would call roll please.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. You're back. Get with staff, they'll help you out with the next steps to keep you in compliance, so you don't have to come back.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have an amendment to the table of permitted uses, a proposed amendment to Appendix A, table of permitted uses of our zoning ordinance with the intent to make trails a permitted use within all zones. Ms. Robertson?
I don't have anything to add from the work session. I do want to note, too, there's a small housekeeping item also proposing. The name of trails in the use definition does not match the use chart. So I'm just proposing to delete from biking and cycling because our definition of the trail use also includes hiking. And so, that's a small housekeeping item. And then other than that, staff finds this is supposed to be a transportation use, and transportation is supposed to get you throughout the city, not just trying to stay within one zone. So staff is proposing just to make it a by-right use within all uses. No, no, that department.
Any questions for staff? All right, this is a modification to our scheduled uses, so we will conduct a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to address the commission concerning this change of adding trails to all voting classifications as a by-right use? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, it's back to you.
Do we need to add in the housekeeping amendment? Do we need to add in the housekeeping amendment?
That's already in the staff report, but we just say we wanna make the change per the staff recommendation, that motion is ordered.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve this based on the staff recommendation.
This will require an ordinance change, so you're recommending it to the council?
We're recommending it to City Council.
Ah, I recommend, move, we recommend it to City Council.
You got a motion from Lloyd, a second from Portillo, if you call a roll, please.
Clessen?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Sedbury?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. Build more trails, please.
Yes, please.
All right, last on our agenda for tonight, under new business, we have waiver 2023-1145, a waiver request to have a secondary access driveway on a lot with less than 151 feet of frontage at 40 Hassel Circle. Mr. Jones?
Uh, nothing new to add on this one for our last discussion. Just high level overview, this is a waiver on the Access Management Code, Section 107, 3.7, which determines the maximum number of access grounds for property according to the length of street frontage of that lot. 40 Hassel has 80 feet of street frontage. The threshold to have a secondary driveway is 151 plus feet. And I'll get more into the background here, but the area of this waiver has been a pre-existing gravel section, which I'll show in the exhibit, prior to the city's incorporation. And it's been used by the applicant since that time. It's just been constructed with decorative gravel, which Section 2636 lists as a prohibited parking surface, which is what precludes us as staff from considering it as illegal non-conformity and its usage as well. So, the applicant is requesting this waiver in order to bring that such area into compliance regarding service requirements. In other words, replace the decorative gravel with an approved surface material type like SB2 or concrete. But he requires that waiver to move forward with work. Now, we'll show a couple exhibits. Louder?
Yeah.
Really, still?
We can't hear you.
Yelling?
That's okay.
I think it's the wind, that's the problem. Yeah, it's concerning.
It's not windy.
It's not windy, that's gotta be something.
It's the sun on there. It's six, it's six o'clock, I don't think so.
Uh, so here's some exhibits, in case you wanna look at this. I just wanted to clarify, the plot plan that's been included lists a proposed driveway, that's existing. This is just the plot plan used for construction. The actual proposed area has been highlighted in that red outline area. And the dimensions are listed there, around 37 feet long and 60 feet wide. And then I think a couple more exhibits, just to show some images. So here's a picture taken by code enforcement showing how it appears from the street with decorative gravel, and how it's been used over time. And then, some of the hardships of extending the driveway out to create additional parking, just from what's already there. Here, it's limited by steep topography and retaining law. And then, to the other side, there is a collection of utilities, namely the guide wires and water. And then, I think, maybe just a couple more exhibits. One final one. Here's a historical imagery retrieved from Book of Earth, showing it constructed at the time of the house built. This is January 30th, 2008.
Where was it built?
I might move that to the applicant, don't know the exact date, but this image is from January 30th, 2008.
Any other questions for staff? All right, is the applicant present, would you like to come up and add on to the staff comments?
Most, mostly said it was, was correct, thank you, there is a small correction, though. The house was built in 2006. We talked to the home builder just last month, and he said that, you know, ACC, yeah, POA went through it, approved everything. We moved in 2007 when it became available, been there ever since, or so, so I believe it was before the city was, you know, incorporated. The house was, as you mentioned, the house was built with a secondary driveway. I believe this was the decorative rock that was there, or so. One, one small correction was, we haven't been using it since we moved in, like that. We only had two cars, kept them in the garage, or so. Recently, a few years ago, our, our daughter passed away, and we were fortunate to be able to adopt our grandchild. And as he's getting closer to driving age, we purchased a third car just a few months ago. And most of the time, it's, it's in right in the driveway, but we thought, you know what? To be able to get the other two cars, and now for them having a juggle, moving around, so like that, we'd like to use another option, or so. And like you said, one option, there's, there's, you know, cables on one side and a water line we couldn't use on this side. It's a little steep, you go to the east side, or, I'm covering it out, I think, yeah, that side. But we could connect it, you know, I mean, we could, if that would help in the discussion, we're, we're very flexible. We've already reached out to our local landscape companies, just to be proactive, and asking about SB2 gravel and/or, you know, concrete, or so, just to see what some options are to, to be compliant. And we're also, you might not be able to see from this picture, but the circle drive, there's also kind of a little blind curve just right at the road here, or so. So we, it could also be better if we can keep the vehicles off the street for safety reasons.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Ms. Farner?
Ms. Teague, approximately, how far is it from that secondary driveway to this Trafalgar? Is it Trafalgar?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's common property?
Yeah, it's common property on all sides. I got across the street, common property, from our driveway and the secondary driveway, all the way to Trafalgar.
Okay.
100 feet, I'm not sure, but it's, it's a huge gully.
And do I understand that when you bought the property, that secondary driveway was already there?
That's correct.
And it was put there when they built the house?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it was to be used for a secondary driveway?
I believe so, there, on the side, on that side of the house, there is some, not only have workshop doors, so probably maybe intention was golf cart access type thing, but there's also sliding doors into, we use it as a workout room, but another room in the house there on, on the bottom layer. Or so, so there is two entryways, doors on that side that you can get to from that extra driveway.
So, I, I just wanna be clear, you're saying, so if you come around to that side of the house, to the left of the house, there's actually an entry down there?
I personally wish it didn't have to be SB2.
I was gonna say.
Hey, we're here with concrete, that'd be the recommendation, we're, we're fine with that, too. We, we just didn't know what options it were, so.
No, I, it's, yeah, it's, it's a long story of the chicken and the egg in Bellavista. Because we, we, we are, our hand, we've tried very hard not to allow things that the ACC does not allow. And I think, Taylor, you were telling me this was drafted to match up with the ACC requirements, or the code, the covenants and restrictions for the POA.
There's two areas of code that are at play with this request, that's making it so interesting. So there's 2636, which, which doesn't allow parking, standing, or stopping of a vehicle on anything other than SB2 or concrete. So, that's what's getting him flagged right now. And there's no grandfather clause from that, you can't park on decorative gravel anytime. That's just, that's the standard item. So to bring it into compliance, he's wanting to create a secondary access to the city street. Our code would prefer concrete or asphalt, however, because of 2636, it allows parking and stopping to be on SB2. But yeah, after speaking with the ACC, they allow concrete or SB2 so long as it's contained with a border, which is what our code says as well. So, I believe so, yes, it was pulled from that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am?
Okay, as Taylor mentioned, this does not count as a pre-existing use.
The, the parking on the gravel does not count as a pre-existing use, that's correct.
Correct. Now, we have four items that we're requested to consider for a waiver.
Correct.
This situation does not conform to any of the four. Therefore, I do not believe that we have any grounds on which to approve this variance.
Waiver, this is not a variance.
Waiver, I'm sorry.
And with, and with waiver, we have a little bit more latitude than we do with variances.
This is also on the second page here.
Right, it was also in our packet. None of those four conditions apply to this situation. This is a situation, as far as I'm concerned, completely created by the applicant. I don't think we have any grounds to approve this waiver.
Okay, any other comments?
My, my only comment would be that that situation of the second driveway was there when he bought the house, it was there when we became the city. So if we're just allowing the owner to put SB2 in there, or concrete, or whatever, so that he can continue using what was already there, it seems that should be appropriate.
My concern is if we do that, we will open the floodgates to hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of similar applications, and we will have cars parked willingly in front yards all over the city.
And staff will note, too, decorative gravel is not considered an access drive. So that's why we are not recognizing it as a pre-existing driveway. Otherwise, all these landscape yards would be considered multiple accesses to the street.
That was, that was my question, was that it had been, it had been covered in decorative gravel rather than the SB2.
That's correct, it's a different gravel than what's in the rest of the landscape, but that's the lot that was, that was used.
We always ask for our motions to be in the affirmative, so if we, we're done discussing, I will need a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve waiver 11145.
A motion from Farner?
Second.
Second from Dool, you call a roll, please.
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Clessen?
No.
Dool?
Yes.
Sedbury?
No.
Floyd?
No.
Ellis?
Are these a simple majority or two thirds? No. Staff will get with you on what the next steps are, but as far as the gravel is concerned, it can stay there just like you've got it right now.
Can't park it up there.
Can't park it up there. But staff will get with you on the next steps on that, make sure. Next up, we have an open discussion on the maximum amount of dockside improvements, parking in residential zones, BCA and zoning variances. Which one's going first, ma'am? We'll start with dockside improvements.
Yeah, we've talked about this before, and staff has been looking into it, because that was the outcome of the last open discussion, is... Maybe we should look at it. So staff's been looking at it, Megan's been researching other city codes, Derek did a hefty amount of research before he left, trying to find a comparable city to see what they do, do they do max percentages of the lake, shorefront, that kind of thing. So Megan has a little bit of information to share with you on what she's found so far, and to kind of pick your brain on.
Right, so, in other places, like the Hoover Lake, or, et cetera, they base that on a capacity study, and that's run by the Corps of Engineers. I reached out to the POA to see if they have done any sort of capacity study to determine whether or not we're vastly approaching the maximum number of dockside improvements for the lakefront properties. I have looked at all of our lakes, and I have found a number of POA parcels specifically that have upwards of five to six to 15 dockside improvements for that parcel area. The townhomes are another example of that, we've got two areas that have seven to 10 docks per parcel behind them, and those cross the townhome common property. So, we've got the Davis request tonight, and then, the next cycle, we have another request for dockside improvement within that same P1 on the adjacent Townhome parcel for 19 Davis. And so, I have not been contacted back by the Corps of Engineers to kind of see how long that capacity study takes, what all it entails. However, that is the way that they are determining dockside improvements.
But these are not core regulated lakes, correct?
Correct. They are not, and the POA did not return my email regarding that. But our lakes right now, 75% of the developed lots have a dockside improvement or more. Some of the older ones, as, as we discussed prior, some of them have one to two, and when we see those come back, it's when there's a replacement required, or they're trying to add an additional dock, so we, we approach the two to three dockside improvements, which is why they land in front of the commission, because they are exceeding that dockside. However, the most, the most important parcels to zone in on are the large POA and townhome owned parcels there, which range from two to 300 acres that surround the lakes. That includes the marina, the dams, which we saw a few months ago, to add the fishing dock for public school use. We have no formal recommendation on which way you'd like to go on it, but there are a number of parcels that are heavily developed and exceeding that, one per parcel.
I wonder, I understand the individual lots, but I wonder if our code should read on common properties, if it's approved by the POA, then it's approved by the city, and just let the POA manage their own common property?
Well, the, if you're, I think you're looking at me, I don't know if you're looking at me.
I'm looking at private use, sir.
Okay, well, um, a couple of thoughts came to mind. Of the cities that regulate that are those public lakes, I bet they are public lakes.
I bet they are.
These are private lakes. Private uses on private lakes. And that is a serious distinction that could give the city reason to say, y'all figure that out, we're not gonna take a stand on that particular thing. But you could say that about a lot of stuff in Bellavista.
I mean, there, there are some things that, like we talked about in our training session, about the public health, safety, and welfare. Is another dock on a Townhome Association property really gonna affect the public health, safety, and welfare? We don't get our drinking water from the lakes.
You know, one thing that the government should not do is sit around and guess about it. If we're concerned about it, study it, have a study done, get somebody to tell you what the risks are of docks or not. Maybe having more docks is safer, because you've got more things to grab onto if you're a swimmer. I don't know.
That's a fair question.
You know, who, who has any idea?
I think staff is asking that question, are we concerned about it?
Or do you, do you still think it needs to change? Do you think the zoning, if it's P1, needs to be allowed more docks? Do you think that it should be done by capac, like, width percentage of the lakefront? Like, is the one per parcel fair? Is the intent of this for only the one R1 lots that are actually lake access? Or is this also intended for lots that completely surround the lake, is what staff's want, like, want? Your opinion on? Does this, do you think the intent of this dockside improvement requirement was intended for these huge P1 parcels that have multiple docks already? Or was it only intended for the R1 lot that only has 100 feet of lakefront? That's the big question we're asking.
I suppose when she builds hers, you're gonna get more questions.
We've already got another one submitted, it's coming up. We've already got another one submitted, it's coming up.
Same docklot, it's probably going to want two or three.
What does staff want to do? Do you want to keep trying to regulate this stuff in the P1 filter? Or you want to let the ACC and the POA manage their own property and their own lakes?
POA probably should have some say in how many docks go on each lake.
I mean, they have to get approved by the ACC, right? And the POA to put it there?
They achieve a permit from the ACC as well as meeting POA requirements, but I believe the actual permits are from the city and the ACC.
Sure, but I mean, we can rewrite our code if the council so chooses to say we're not going to really concern ourselves with the P1 properties and just do the R1 single family properties. If I heard you correctly.
Are you saying not require a permit for if it's on a P1 zone?
No, I'm saying that we can grant the permit once the POA approves the dock on a P1 property.
Does the POA have inspectors for building and safety?
I'm not saying, I'm still saying we would issue a building permit. We just can't, we wouldn't issue a building permit until the ACC approved the dock location, size, design and all of that.
And we would have every right to require a building permit, inspect these things and all that stuff. We're just done by numbers.
I was talking about the various P1 properties and I'm, like the one we had tonight, I was sitting there struggling with eight other people getting the Heather Room Dock with the Townhome Association and for us to decide that number nine or number 10 or number 12 doesn't get one.
Well, is there a way to make the code specific to P1 properties as opposed to an individual lake lot?
Well, staff could bring you a proposal for that if that's what you guys are interested in.
How do docks on P1 not affect the city as much as a dock on an R1 or vice versa? What is the public, what's the rational basis for a distinction?
I don't know the rest.
That's what we've been looking for. How do other cities or governing bodies or other agencies determine that max?
Well, this is a, that's the thing I go back to, this is a private lake, own lot of POA. And we're, it's different than a driveway access. The city of Bella Vista owns the roads now. We took those over. We did not take the lakes, we did not take the golf courses over.
Is this something that the staff could meet with the POA and see if they have any...
They're not going to, I mean, they, I don't know how else to say this, but they have no incentive to cooperate with us on this issue.
You said it very well.
They, I mean, they're going to do what they want to do and whatever we want to do is what we want to do and this, we're all going to get together and do, it just isn't, it's, we've got so many, and I know this, the nature of this city, given the fact that it's privately planned and basically privately owned in terms of all the infrastructure, including the utilities, makes it incredibly difficult for a municipal government in that to exercise the control most cities would exercise. And this is just one element.
What would you recommend in this case?
I'd say, well, again, I'm not here to express opinions. Don't try to regulate the number of docks. Make sure they're safe docks, make sure they're constructed correctly, make sure there's not electrical problems. I mean, we've seen all kinds of issues regarding safety and these things, but you know, these people are buying these houses and the market will address, you know, there's just dock, 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 you know, but then again, there are marinas where it's just dock, 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 you know, one after another and it's not our lake. If it was our lake and I'm not advocating it ever be our lake, any of these, because of all the issues that come with that. You know, it's up to the POA to make a decision. They own the lake. They really have an interest.
That's the question I was asking, are we trying to regulate something? Add requirements beyond what the private property under that lake has just because we feel like we want to? Or are we, like Jason says, we focus on the public health, safety and welfare and make sure the dock is constructed correctly and get out of the business of hearing variance requests every month on docks?
Well, we don't have our police department patrol on the lake to make sure everybody has their activity guard.
Nope, that's what...
We don't issue permits for boats for the lakes. I feel like we should do that. Aside from building permits.
Well, I would like to see us keep control of the individual lots.
I'm...
About the number of docks and...
I kind of, I'm, hearing our attorney, I think we need to be in the business of regulating them or not. One or the other, not try to do some kind of a hybrid approach. It still makes it complicated for staff. And I said, it's...
I'll think about that.
I'll give you a good example. Our dock on the highway runs right through the middle of the city. That's their highway. They grant the driveway permits onto that highway. The city can have some say on it, but technically that highway is sovereign. If, even if we grant a driveway permit, our dock does not have to grant that. This is a lot of the same way. We can grant a second dock, but if the POA says no, then our granting means nothing. And so I want to make sure that we're not taking away something that by being, you know, when you purchase your property within Bella Vista, you have the right to do or other people have the right to do before we were even a city. And the POA's done a good, I mean, they have managed those lakes since the 60s. Does the city need to step in now, 60 years later, and start helping them with that? Or do we just let them manage their lakes?
Well, with health education, yeah, but...
Yeah, I think, sorry, this sun is not...
You've got the worst seat in the house.
Yeah, I think they got the worst, but those blinds aren't going to work. I think if we were to remove the ordinance that specifies there can only be one side, one dock side improvement per parcel, that doesn't mean that we don't have to give them a building permit. It just throws it back to the ACC. And if the ACC wants to grant it, they still have to come to us for a building permit. So I think that might solve what you're suggesting.
That's what I'm saying is, once the ACC and the POA signs off on it, then the city can issue a building permit on the dock and do the inspections and away we go. And then we get out of the business.
We have every right to require certain safety, special construction on docks even, whatever that might entail. We might want to see certain safety features on the dock. We want to make, you know, I can't even presuppose what all that would include, but we would have every right to.
That's what we have qualified building inspectors for.
So just to clarify, which I was going to bring that up too. It sounds like it may just be a removal of the number restricted and just allow us to still enforce the side setback and the size limitation and materials used and of course other safety requirements is what would be left after that.
Yeah, basically, say once the ACC and the POA approve, you can issue their requirement.
Because then you'd still have a lot of people coming wanting to build into the...
Yeah, just enforce or something.
Yes. I would want to hear those.
In other words, get out of dock business, other than building permits. That's what they're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's what some of them, most of them are saying.
Yeah, we'll do a little health and safety part of it, but not the...
So we'll be doing still size limitations, materials and side setbacks. That's all we'd be, like, that's basically still the requirements we'd be enforcing.
Size limitation has to be...
It's still in there.
Yep.
You don't want a 50-foot dock.
Yeah, okay, staff.
That will take care of 75% of the variance for docks.
Well, that's the number one dock, ZVR that we get sometimes and previously in the past, we'd get some on like length because they'd want like a 22-foot or a 30-foot dock. Our code maxes out at 18 feet. But yeah, the number restricted is...
Why is it maxed out at 18 feet?
I don't know.
Not splitting boats that are 18 feet long?
Yeah, and 22 feet long. I'm not sure why, I wasn't here when it was written.
My fishing boat is 20 feet long, that is just a little fish.
I feel like if that's the only remaining variance, we're going to see those for length.
Yeah, length would be...
I wouldn't be opposed to increasing our length.
Yeah, I wouldn't either, to be honest with you.
Sometimes in the code, it's a problem.
Yeah, it goes all the way across the code.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not saying to give an unlimited length, but 18, like Ian says, is a little too short.
We have a provision that calculates the distance, either 18, 12...
15% of the shoreline distance.
So be that, we're just kind of backwards, restrict that, other jurisdictions will go with that.
Yep. Of course, that's, now this goes with recommendation, the city council.
We'll have to hold it up here.
Parking in the residential zone.
This kind of goes back to the waiver request we saw today. Staff again is just wanting to discuss or just get your guys' opinion on SB2 parking areas. I think Commissioner Lloyd had an item on it based off the email that I received. I said I'd be happy to bring it up in open discussion if you wanted to talk about it further.
I gave that out to everybody and I said, basically what I said.
I could add something to this because I've been around here long enough. But when we first started the city, there was a real push by the mayor at the time and members of the council, I think, to establish a few rules which mirrored ACC requirements. And the point of that was particularly something like parking, it was very difficult, again, I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth or what their official position is, but it was difficult for the ACC to control people parking because that's just, they, their remedy is to take away membership privileges or to sue someone or to take actions, which didn't work. And so when we became a city, they thought, great, we'll get city streets and we'll get some parking enforcement and some things. And so they adopted this requirement to mimic or mirror ACC requirements. And one of those things was that they would allow people to park in the yard as long as it had SB2 gravel on it. And they did not want people parking on the decorative gravel. So the city adopted an ordinance that, like I said, mirrored that. So what that creates is that, and we've had this in other contexts, people want to change the city rule because they want to do something and what they don't understand, and I mean no disrespect to any of them, it's confusing, is that they're just going to allow the ACC to sue. We did this with chickens. We had people come to the city wanting us to allow hobby chickens in houses. And they had a, I wasn't here at this time, but they had a significant debate about it. And they adopted an ordinance that would allow a certain number of hobby chickens in residences. And as soon as they started doing it, the ACC started sending letters and they filed lawsuits to stop it because it violated the covenants. And so people thought they were going to be allowed to do something or not do something based, if they could convince the city of something. And it is part of the multi-layered private and public rules and enforcement that we have here. And so if we didn't have this rule and we didn't care about where people parked, the ACC would care where they parked. If they were in the 90-plus percent of Bella Vista that are a part of the Bella Vista POA and they're going to start taking legal action against them, they're still not going to be able to do it.
Right.
And so we've got, and it is so hard to get people to understand that and they get so mad. I'm just going to be honest with you. The staff, I don't, I mean, they get it more than I do, but it's just the frustration and anger about some of that and you just can't explain it and it is kind of a difficult legal thing to understand. I'm not, these are intelligent people, they get it, but it's just, it's just the nature of what we've got here and I don't know how to fix that.
And I'll be honest with you, I think every other city in northwest Arkansas is very restrictive on what they allow for driveways and parking. I mean, they're very restrictive. We're probably the most liberal already in the city by a pretty long shot.
I agree.
And I have struggled with that a lot because I, you know, we talk about it in all these different parameters and stuff like that, but you know, there should only be so many cars in a house.
Right.
Because technically for, we talked about the septic systems before, there's only so many people supposed to be living in that house based on that septic system.
There'd be help with the short-term roof too.
Well, we're not, we're not going to, that's not my first amendment. But, I mean, I even got the nasty letter one time because my son was parking in the grass. So I get it, it was fair, he was wrong, he wasn't supposed to be doing that and he moved his car. So, I don't know, I think our ordinance is good. I wish we didn't allow SB2. I wish it had to be concrete, just plain up had to be concrete. I don't even like asphalt, to be honest with you. Wish it had to be concrete and I wish it was restricted to one curb cut for 150 feet of front edge. And if you get over 150 feet or whatever it is, you can have two. But I mean, we, I remember when the commission formed and we wrote that one, that was one we did write ourselves with on driveways and off-street parking. We labored under that. And the council adopted it. But that's me. I'm only one. Somebody else please pick up, please.
So the ACC only allows SB2 as...
Or concrete.
Or concrete. I think we're missing out on some other opportunities like with paving stones.
So our total allows concrete pavers?
Yeah.
Paving stones? I'd have to verify it then.
Well, let me rephrase it, I think the ACC is missing. Other options.
I don't know off the top of my head if they allow it.
SB2 is the bottom of my list as for saving of anything.
Let me ask you a question, why is this in for an open discussion? Are you wanting to change something?
No.
I just wanted your guys' opinion because it's been discussed on multiple levels and so staff, we are your staff of the planning commission, so just wanted to...
We have told staff that we keep seeing the same thing, do we need to revisit the code?
Yeah, I just wondered if they were trying to recommend something here, if they're not.
I know the ACC, we don't talk a lot. I am agreeing with Commissioner Sebberi. This is one I think I would like staff to maybe go back to the ACC and say, as a group, you know, can we revisit what we build driveways out of and maybe get rid of SB2 and allow other types that are what we would consider low-impact driveways? Now, there's a lot of acceptable things out there that's not SB2.
I had this conversation in other cities and in those other cities, if I wanted to pay my driveway with gold nuggets, it wouldn't be allowed. So it didn't make any difference what the other material was, whether it was superior or not. It just flat out was not allowed. And I don't know if that was just, you know, as, you know, a product of being unfamiliar with construction techniques or just trying to simplify it to the point where you didn't have to worry about it.
They came up with it in the 60s and all they had was concrete, asphalt, SB2. Yeah. That's all they had.
I mean, there are a lot of alternatives that are impervious.
Yes.
That would be, and I think with the topography and water runoff issues that we have, recommending some other up-to-date, impervious surfaces would be appropriate.
I'll just add that as the city continues to click along with 500 to 600 building permits per year, even though there's 39,000 lots, about half of those are either built on or built on and the owner owns the one next door and probably never have a house on it because it's got a septic or just, you know, they're using it for other purposes. So what we're seeing, whether it's parking challenges because of pie-shaped lots, short depths lots with steep topography or drainage or people buying a lot two doors up because they thought they could park on it, we're seeing more and more challenges over these remaining least, less desirable lots, unbuildable lots than what the city saw in its first 30 or 40 years, in my opinion. So moving forward, these remaining 10,000 or so lots that can be built on, we're going to have more and more challenges.
Are you recommending that we adjust our code to maybe one off-street parking stall or, you know, it's like the one we looked at, I mean, I give the applicant credit, I mean, he...
Our code prohibits that, but when you drop around every lake, you see a ton of those and people want to be able to have those like their neighbors have. And those are a challenge for us because we get a lot of requests, but I mean, they affect drainage, you know?
One little pie set law where he's putting a 700 square foot house on there and making a two-story that barely getting a one-car garage and a little bitty driveway on there.
Yeah, he's talking about a parking stall not in the right of way, within the setbacks. So are you saying making an allowance for the smaller lots of street frontage to only have one park?
I mean, if there's some logical stuff there that we ought to reconsider to try to cut down on the workload, should we?
Well, the problem with the street issue, we're going to talk about that, is the streets are too narrow, we can't get fire trucks through there. are too narrow, we can't get fire trucks through there, the fire chief is gonna...
You can barely get your own car.
And we prohibit overnight parking on the streets. It's a terrible matter.
It's, it's a big, it's a big, I don't know, it's one of those things that, this might be one of those things where we need to hire some consultants to study it, and come back with recommendations that are specific to Bella Vista. And, you know, like, we had the applicant tonight that said he didn't want to jog the cars around, and I understand, but that happens in every city in northwest Arkansas. When their team start driving, they gotta jog the cars around, unless they've got three-car garage.
We had one in the office today that was consulting with our plan reviewer, and I could overhear the conversation. He's trying to get ready to start this design of this house, and he knows going in that he's gonna be jockeying cars, but he's still gonna do it. And then, you know, there's a chance that it could end up being a problem down the road, so he's still in, knowing there's gonna be trouble.
Sure. I mean, and it comes back to what Jason has said before. Just because I want does not mean that if we grant it. And we do struggle with that a lot, of the I wants, instead of looking at, this is what our ordinance says, come up with something that fits our ordinance. As we saw that a few months ago, one of the guy that was, I mean, actually took the time to design a house that fit the topography and fit the lot. And he had a couple of minor things, but it was obvious that he didn't just pull a house plan out off the website and plop it down and said, I want this.
Thank God, it's really helpful.
Was it? Didn't tell you anything?
I think as much of a discussion as it is here will be at the council.
Oh, I know, you are getting ready, the council's getting ready.
And, well, it just, there's no, it's just impossible to coalesce around what to do. It's just because everything is different, and every, you just...
It's not a cookie cutter.
It's not, it's not. We don't have regular-sized street width, we don't have, you know, because there was no city that was in charge of deciding how those houses were gonna get built, and laid out when they were laid out. And...
If you really want to get into it, you can talk about the story.
Nope. That's for the council, they're gonna get to deal with that, I guess. According to, according to the social media, they're gonna get to deal with that. All right, last up, we have BZA and zoning variances. I know that's coming out of our work session. Whatever, I told, I was emailed on that, and I told staff, whatever our city attorney recommends, that's what we should do.
You need to ask me, because I don't know what came up, I'm sorry.
Should we, should we do all of our BZA business in a block, and then move on to waivers of large scale as a second phase? We had training with regional planning, and they said we ought to technically wear two different hats. The zoning variance always comes before the large-scale approval.
Well, I think you...
Is there one city that doesn't do that, Springdale specifically? They take them by the project?
I, obviously, you would not have the authority to approve a large scale that presupposed the approval of a variance you had not decided. So it's always going to be, my advice to you, that you consider any variances prior to any development plan based on those variances.
Sure.
Because you know, there's, there are certain requirements you have to meet in order to prove a variance, and, and so you need to establish that, then you can look at your development based on that. You run the risk of conflating all of the impermissible, some impermissible considerations in your variance, or adding requirements onto a large scale that may not be appropriate. So. But in terms of, I mean, you sit as the board of zoning adjustment, I don't, with respect to whoever was talking, you don't need to split it up and, and say, okay, take this hat off, and then have all this business together, and all that business together. You, as long as we're doing it the right way, and you're considering it the way you need to consider it.
As long as we're following the guidelines spelled out in the ordinance.
Right.
In our, in our ordinance, as to how to...
And when you consider a variance, you're sitting as the board of adjustment, and you're using different consideration criteria, and you're, you know, the, it's up to the various applicants to come and determine the appropriate way to appeal those various decisions. If it's a variance, they have to go to court directly. If it's a large scale, they don't like the result of, they go to the city council.
If it's a waiver, it goes...
Or if it's a waiver, it could potentially go to the city council. So, I don't, I mean, I was asked, when we did this whole combining thing, I was asked that very question. And this is how we came up with doing that, like you.
I like the way we do it.
Yes.
We consider everything for that project at that time. We stay, and it's not jumping back and forth. One thing I think I do like, and I do appreciate Commissioner Lloyd printing these out for us, the technology's great, I kinda like it, but I really don't like it at all, to be quite honest with you. I wouldn't mind you all having something to hand out to us, just to remind us of what our criteria are for waivers and variances as we're considering them. Don't need all of them, and then the other thing would be like the full schedule of uses. Because I was sitting here trying to go back and forth and trying to look at the scheduled uses for all of them, and we're looking at the I1 zone. And I know we're trying to be green-friendly, I don't care if you print them out land-lands, you can hand them out every, every month to us, then collect them back up. But I would not mind having a few specific reference materials available that's not on the I1.
So we're still working on that packet for you guys, so we can include that. Would you guys just prefer us bring those, like, to every meeting, so you can just have them?
If you want to just have a little three-ring binder that's got a few cheat sheets in it that deals with, these are the three criteria for a variance, these are the four criteria for a waiver, here's our standard scheduled uses table, man, that would be huge, though, just flip to that real quick and reference it versus.
Okay.
I love this thing, but it crashed only six times tonight, so I'm completely lost. And I, and I understand it's because of what we got in there. I'm hoping once everything gets set up, these are not needed anymore, but time will tell.
Yeah, the plan was for each of you to have a screen, I don't know, we, I assume that's still the plan?
I think it's only three computers.
Is it only three?
Yeah, it's only three.
Because I'm sitting here thinking, if they did that, no one would ever be able to see you, because...
I was assuming we're gonna have some really big monitor hanging up there.
Well, they're gonna be here and here, I think, against these side walls. You see those connections?
Wires. Oh, those might be from the audience.
I'm not sure what those are.
We will, we will labor through until we figure out what we're gonna do in here, but the cheat sheets, even if we go to the TVs or whatever, it would be like...
Good idea.
I would, I would really want to be able to really go, and it was hard to do on the iPads out of schedule.
Those iPads are getting old, aren't they?
They're ancient, yes.
Yeah, so they're probably don't have, they're just, that's, they're just glitchy because there's too much trying to get to fast.
I saw Clayton was doing the same thing, going down through all the C2 versus I1. I was like, mm. And then, of course, it crashed on me twice, I'm really struggling. So, all right, that, everything for open discussion tonight. There must be a basketball game or something you're wanting to watch, or...
Sup.
Oh, yeah, I'm on it, too. All right, city council work session will be on Monday, March 20th, at 5:30 PM. The regular meeting will be on March 27th, at 6:30 PM. We will have a work session on March 30th, at 4:30 PM. Commissioner Farner will be leading that work session. I will be in LA.
Okay.
Then we'll have a planning commission regular meeting on Monday, April 10th, at 4:30 PM. And with that, we stand adjourned. I didn't want to do that all night long. Wanted to be the first one to bang the gavel.
She'd have done it when...
No, that would have been me.
I didn't.
Oh, she didn't understand the process. We got her cleared up, it was okay.